Monday, February 27th to order at 5:32. And will the Secretary please call? Thank you.
Commissioner Alderete.
Here.
Commissioner Becerra.
Here.
Commissioner Contreras Leo.
Here.
Vice Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Verino.
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
Thank you. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the time for the public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? If so, you may fill out a request to speak form with the secretary. Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. I'll undertake a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is the motion a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? Okay. Consent calendar's done. Moving on to the communication disclosures. Where's my disclosure? Where's my disclosure? I don't know where my little disclosure is, but does anyone have any communication disclosures to discuss? None? Okay, great. Then we will move on to the public hearings. We have a public hearing for the modification to conditionally used permit 2005-29.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Plan Commissioners. This is an application on behalf of Joe Perez, who is representing at Gallimard Restaurant. And basically what they're requesting is to modify an existing CUP which was approved back in 2005, which is CUP number 2005-29, which currently allows for the on-sale and consumption of beer and wine. So they're amending the current CUP in order to act still spirits at this location. So this is a site description of the property. It's located on the somewhat middle block of Jefferson Place and Broadway off of Seventeenth Street. It's been in the restaurant since a couple of years now, and Gallimard took ownership a few years back, right after the CUP was approved. As you can see by the map, the subject area is indicated by red, and the property currently has a parking agreement with the adjacent property, which is at the top right, which indicates the parking area. So it is a shared parking facility. And throughout the entire vicinity, it's primarily surrounded by commercial uses, and it is zoned C1. This is a site plan again, just showing the immediate property, which is just pertains to this parcel. And there's a couple of onsite parking, but the remaining of the parking stalls are provided offsite. This is an existing floor plan of the restaurant, and per our code, restaurants are only allowed to have a display area of 5%. They currently have a display area of less than 1%, so they're compliant with our current code requirements for that. This is just a side photo of the existing restaurant. And project analysis, it does meet all of our current San Antonio municipal code requirements, and the restaurant will continue to operate as is, and it will continue to provide service to the community as well as to the visitors. And we did add some standards and conditions of approval as per the attached resolution that we're sure that this location will comply and will continue to be of a non-nuisance to the vicinity. And staff is basically recommending that we, that the planning commission approve the modification to CUP number 2005-29 as conditioned. And that concludes the presentation. I'll be free to answer any of your questions.
Commissioner Mendoza had a question, Chair.
Oh, I just wanted to note that on page three, the project analysis first paragraph was incomplete. I'm not sure if there was any important information. I don't think so, but it says at the end of the last sentence, staff has prepared the... That was it. Thank you.
Do you know what the end of that, that paragraph should read?
I'm glad that was a typo.
It's a typo?
Correct.
Okay. So the staff has prepared that that should be completely out?
Correct.
Okay. Question? Commissioner, is there?
Yeah. I wanted to, I asked this question to staff earlier this afternoon. How many calls for service has this location received or generated in the last year?
So we did get that information for you, and within last year, there was 18 calls that were received by the police department. Some of these calls were not necessarily associated to the business.
And what was the nature? I mean, cops were being called out? What was the point?
I mean, we had a couple of like alarm went off for like burglary of cars, graffiti, just disturbance, but really didn't indicate what the disturbance was.
Okay. Thank you. One last question. Entertainment permit, do they have a current entertainment permit?
Correct. They currently renewed their entertainment permit. It was part of one of the tables, but it was renewed in October of last year, and it's good for one year. So every year, they need to come in and renew it. And that actually goes through the police department. They need to okay for us to issue that permit.
Great. Thank you.
What is the concentration of licenses, ABC license for this area?
The allowed concentration, the current concentration.
The current?
So currently, I believe there are five establishments for on-sale, and ABC allows up to nine licenses, so we're way beneath the allowed concentration of alcohol licenses.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Mendoza?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One more question. From all the applications that I've seen thus far, I think more notice has been given. I noticed that on this one, the notice was published on the 16th. What's the standard amount of time that they have the residents have to be notified?
It's 10 days.
Oh, 10 days.
Correct.
Thank you.
Chair, I just had a question regarding the window signage. Is it in compliance with the...
It's not. That's part of one of the conditions. We currently only, well, the city only allows 25% of the windows to be covered, so the applicant has been asked to remove that and comply with at least the 25% that we allow. And the most of the windows at front Seventeenth Street are in compliance. The only issue was to the door that is adjacent to that parking lot, that faces the parking lot. That's not in compliance.
Okay, great. So that's already being handled?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question. So on the facility, when you drive by at night, they have kind of the stringed lights that kind of go over the, kind of the side and going up towards the roof. Under our city's sign code, or just under our code in general, are those legal?
They're not allowed, and that was also part of one of the conditions.
Conditions, yeah.
Correct. There were, the applicant was asked to remove those.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we received any correspondence regarding this item?
All correspondence has been distributed. Thank you.
This is the time and place for the public hearing on conditional use permit 2005-29 for Gallimard Restaurant. If you wish to address the planning commission, please file a request to speak form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. The action of the planning commission is final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the San Antonio municipal code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the planning department within ten days from the date of the commission's action, or unless set for public hearing by the city council. So the public hearing is now open. So the applicant like to speak? Or representative applicant?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the planning commission.
As far as the conditions, the five, six, and seven, out of those, the windows have been cleared on the seventh seat side. Owners have been advised about the lights. Commissioner Becerra has mentioned those won't be removed as early as this week. And also, there was an issue concerning striping. Those are going to be restriked as well.
Any questions, the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no speaker cards, I'm gonna, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion or any comments, questions? Commissioner?
Madam Chair, the motion to approve the condition permit 2005-29.
I second.
I have a motion for approval on a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? Congratulations. That concludes the business calendar, and everyone is here. We don't have any absences, so we'll move on to staff comments.
We have a few comments. We'd like to make an update on the general plan update process. Our second meeting of the general plan advisory committee will be this Wednesday, and we'll be focusing on going through the community input report at that time. Another thing that happened this last week was we were asked about the sunshine ordinance meetings and where you can get information on the sunshine ordinance meetings. The sunshine ordinance was adopted as a tool for neighborhood people and everyday people to be able to look at and discuss kind of without the more official process of people. So it was a meeting directly between the developer and citizens that are there. So typically, they are hosted by the developer, and they are not necessarily a, they are not a city meeting, per se, although they have to be completed prior to the public hearing being scheduled or the, the application being deemed complete. But people do want to know about them. We do put them currently on the list of projects. If you hit on the project, the date for a sunshine ordinance meeting will be there, and any other future meetings, planning commission, council, those kinds of things are all on the major project lists. However, that's a little hard. It's hard for people, just generally in the public, to get to that calendar and to figure out the major projects and what the name of it is. So we have looked at that, and we also want to make sure that all of our meetings are well-publicized to the general public, include throughout the planning and building agency. We've been investigating different techniques to make this happen. We had thought about using the city calendar in general, but that seems to be a more difficult process than we would like to have it be. And so we've decided to develop a planning and building agency calendar itself, and it will have all the, all the events that are coming up that are, that are hosted by the, our agency, as well as the sunshine ordinance meetings will also be on there as well. So you'll be able to look at that calendar and, and find out if you're interested in a project or not, and what's coming up. The final issue that we'd like to talk about a little bit, or give you an update on a little bit, is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. We had initiated a process for, a public process for reviewing the, and updating and adopting an accessory dwelling unit ordinance that would be in compliance with the new state law. However, we were directed, for various reasons, we were directed to stop that process. So that process is currently on hold, although we have, we will be taking this to one of the council subdivision, excuse me, subcommittee meetings upcoming this next month to ask them to provide us with clear direction on what way, what way to go on that. So I just wanted to update you on those few items, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
I have two questions. Number one is on the sunshine ordinance. I mean, I think one of the things that, I mean, although it's the developer's, you know, responsibility, so to speak, to call the meeting, the city has dictated that we have sunshine ordinance meetings. It was voted on by the council. So it's a city, it's a city direction, directive, as far as I see. So from our standpoint, I mean, I got that package in my email, looked at, and I didn't even know what it was, other than a package that came out of, you know, it was a 25-page document. I really didn't understand that it was a sunshine ordinance meeting, and would have probably wanted to attend it, you know, would have wanted to attend it maybe if I'd seen that. It didn't come, it didn't come clearer to me.
I'm not quite sure what you're talking about, a 20-page...
There was a document that I received.
It did not come from planning. It must have come from the developer.
Right. Okay, but it wasn't...
And we don't vet that. It's their meeting. So the materials that are provided, you received a 25-page document?
Yep. You looking at me like that, Phil?
Yeah, I never received a document of that sorts either, so...
I got a document.
Did you receive the document as well?
I did not.
Okay. We didn't either.
Well, I got a document, and so, I mean, it coincided with the actual event that occurred, but I didn't know until after the fact. So, I mean, you know, as far as communication goes, I think if we're going, if we've dictated directives from that standpoint, maybe we should provide some guidelines to the, to the developer, whoever's going to call that meeting, so that they have maybe a distribution list that would be over and above what would be considered. I mean, why couldn't we have, if the planning staff would like to be part of that, or planning commission would like to be part of that, that meeting, why couldn't we offer that as a, here's a couple, here's the planning commission, if you want to invite them, you can invite them? Can we do something like that? Some way that we can open up the communication so that we have some kind of, you know, template that's given to the, that's given to the developers, or given to whoever's calling. Oops, little cut.
Yeah. Part of the, you know, one of the main considerations is that, that wasn't the intent, the intent was not to have you there, because you, your presence may make people less comfortable to talk and to negotiate with the developers. And that, that was the intent. It's not, you know, we're not trying to dissuade you, but that was the intent of the ordinance in the first place. The other thing is that if we notify all of you, and it, it can become problematic in terms of the Brown Act, in terms of how many people, because we can't ever have more than three of you in one place at a time. So talking about or participating in business, because then it would be a violation of the Brown Act. So if you, if you want to come to a meeting and you see it on the, on the city calendar, that is your prerogative as an individual citizen. That's your right as an individual citizen. But in the role of planning commissioner, that you may want to think carefully about whether or not you want to do that as well, because part of the, part of the approach when you come to this public hearing, and part of the disclosure is that you come to this public hearing with an open mind. And, and that's, and of course, you've gathered all the information that you can possibly do so, but your duty, I suppose is the right word, is to give the applicant the fairest shake that they can get. And so that's another constraint in terms of coming to these meetings. It does get a little, it does get a little dicey, but if you want to go as a public citizen, that is your prerogative, but please, if there's more than three of you there...
And even so, even if, I mean, if, if there's a concern about the Brown Act, that's another part of the template that says to people, you know, you need to post this, you need to do these types of things from a, from a Brown Act point of view, in order to, in order to, you know, take care of that situation.
But it's not our meeting. We, we can't post it because it's not our meeting.
I'm not saying you post it. I mean, they have, if they, if they are, if they are going to post a meeting, then why is it that they can't, they can't be given the guidelines of, of the Brown Act to say, we will post it and put up signage and...
Madam Chair, may I just jump in real quick? This is crazy. Okay, first of all, us showing up at a meeting does not somehow trigger the Brown Act. Now, if four of us get together in the corner and start talking about how we're going to approve it or deny it, oh yeah, there's a Brown Act violation. But for the seven of us, or three of us, or four of us to show up somewhere is not a violation of the Brown Act. What this whole discussion came about was because there was a project over on East First Street, and I was told that there was a sunshine meeting. In the past, this commission has received sunshine ordinance notices, just as a courtesy. No obligation to go, just as an FYI. Given that we don't get an exhaustive list of projects coming down the pipeline, it's a nice way to know that these are projects that are coming up. So prior to your tenure here, Canada, we were receiving these just as an email from the planners. That's it. I'm not sure why there was a lengthy discussion about the Brown Act that really doesn't pertain to what we're doing here. Nobody here is deciding to go and then convene a meeting and start discussing the project. In fact, I actually attended the one over on East First Street. I showed up, and I said nothing. I was in the back of the room. I'd like to think people know who I am, but really, nobody knew who I was and nobody cared. I was in the back of the room. I watched the presentation. I had the developer come up and ask me if there was anything I wanted to add. I said, no, I'll wait for staff to work with the developer and bring it to the commission. And I think anybody on this dais is very equipped to do the same thing, especially since most of them know what the Brown Act is. Well, I'd say all of them do, because they serve on this commission. So I think at the end of the day, the only thing that I was hoping to see was just simply the emails to return to all seven of us that just lets us know that these meetings are happening. That was it.
At this point, the solution is now this public agency calendar. That's, that's been our direction.
My understanding is when the council members reached out to you and asked you to notify city council members and planning commissioners, did something happen between that time and today that somehow changed that?
Well, I'm waiting for direction from, I don't work for a city council member. I work for...
The city manager. Correct.
City manager. And I am waiting for direction from the city manager on that.
So what changed between your time beginning and your previous, or your predecessor, that somehow stopped these emails from coming to us, just to notify some meetings? I mean, it's just friendly information sharing.
I don't know. I, it wasn't being done when I came. So it, it hasn't been done since I've come here. I did not stop it. I do not know. But the rationale behind it, the reason I was given was that this is the opportunity for the developer and the neighborhood to meet together and to discuss a project.
I, I was here when they adopted the sunshine ordinance, and I completely understand its intent, and it's to shine sunshine on the process. And all seven of us live in the city. All seven of us are residents, and all, I would argue that since we're all sitting up here, all seven of us are actually concerned about what goes on. All we're asking for, the same way that I would ask for information on a project that's coming before this commission, all we're asking for is a little information from staff. I, I'm just failing to see why this is such a complicated issue. Just send us an email. It, it seems to be that simple. I'm not sure why we're having a back and forth about this.
Okay.
You can't send an email?
I will get back to you on it, but from, for right now, this is the solution that we have to address this issue.
So if the commission asks you to send us something, you have to run it all the way up the food chain? Is that really what happens every time that we send you a request for information?
Well, on this, on this issue, if this is a change in policy, which it is...
It was not a change in policy. I have emails I can send you that shows that your staff was sending us sunshine ordinance meeting notices. They've been doing it since my time on this commission. So again, I'm failing to see where the issue is here.
Well, I've been here a year and a half now, and we haven't, it was never done before I came, and it hasn't been done since I've been here.
It was done before you came, Canada.
Well, I, I don't know. I know you said it was...
Are you telling me that I don't have the emails? I can forward them to you.
No, you said, you did tell me that it was done in 2013. But, you know, so until that time, this is, this is our approach, to try to help you, and if we can get this, if we get direction to do this, we will do it. But that is the, that is the direction that we have right now. So are there any other questions on this item?
No, I think, I think my own thing is just, yeah, I think, I mean, it sounds like there needs to be clarification on, well, were we supposed to be getting them, or can we get them? Had, was, what, from the beginning, maybe it sounds like there should have been clarification from the beginning of the adoption of the ordinance as to how that plays out. I mean, I know there's, you know, there, if the community, if those developer meetings with the community are supposed to be, you know...
Right. We are, we are asking...
Transparent to the bodies to be able to...
We are asking for direction and clarification on this. And in the meantime, so that you will be notified, we're, we've established this agency calendar to help you, and we're notifying you where you can find the information on the website until that calendar, until everything gets cleared up.
So right now, so right now, it's at the responsibility of the commissioners or council to go to the calendar and look for it? But it, that, and that's until somebody is, and is that clarification going to be made from the city attorney, or is that going to be made from the city manager?
It's gonna go, yeah. It's, it's gonna have to be, executive management team will be looking into it. And so we'll get, we'll get a decision on it and get back to you.
Will, will we know that maybe by the next meeting, or how...
I hope so.
Okay.
Yeah. I hope so.
Thank you. Commissioner McLaughlin, did you?
Did you have something else on this?
Commissioner Alderete?
Yeah, I, I'll keep it brief, because I don't want to repeat, Commissioner Becerra, but this is like a, an issue looking for a problem. I mean, I, we received them in the past. We always received them. I went to some, didn't go to most. But as members of the community, the fact that we live here is why we got them, and the fact that, you know, undoubtedly because we're on the planning commission, otherwise we wouldn't have received them personally. But if there's some rule I don't know about, I'd be shocked that, since we can't get them. But, you know, Brennan, I get it, you know, I don't want to beat you down on this. It just seems, that was a process for quite some time, but I gotta be honest with you, I didn't notice that it changed. And I don't know if I have those emails, but I might. So, that's it.
Okay, now my second question.
Okay.
The second question I got is regarding the accessory dwellings. The next one, the second question is regarding the accessory dwellings. The comment that I think I made at the last commissioners' meeting was, do we know how many permits have been pulled since the beginning of the year under the new rules?
We have not had any pulled. We've had people come to the counter.
And do we believe that there is going to be a solution to this, or is it just going to be not touched and everybody's not really aware that they're under the state rules now?
We have, we did some initial outreach. Staff has been to, I've been to several community, neighborhood meetings, as well as CommLink last Thursday. And they are...
Yeah. I understand.
There's flyers at the counter. People know. Yeah.
But I mean, at CommLink, there really was, I mean, it was just, as far as I understand, I wasn't there, but I know you were there, Phil, but I believe from what I understand is that, you know, Tom Daley basically outlined what was being done and why things were being done under the new ordinance, but I don't...
Yeah.
The new state, new state ordinance. And so from the standpoint that the state ordinance now trumps the, the city ordinance, I don't think, I mean, I don't think all the people in the room understand that.
Well, they did, at, at CommLink, they understood that the, it was very clear, it was made very clear that the state ordinance was adopted, and that it was in effect January 1st of this year. And that, and from a local government perspective, that it was a very difficult way of adopting an ordinance at the state level, because there were three months in which cities had the opportunity, or counties, local agencies had the opportunity... opportunity or counties, local agencies had the opportunity to adopt an ordinance, which as we all know, takes longer than three months to do. And so he was made very aware of that and that there were, and that communities like ours are more severely, maybe more severely impacted by that ordinance just because of some of the restrictions that it lifts in terms of parking in an already, in, you know, an area in which we're already addressing parking issues in a city where we're already addressing parking, parking issues. So he did, he did hear that loud and clear at CommLink. And we, as I said earlier, we are asking for council direction from the subcommittee on whether or not to re-initiate the, the adoption process, looking at adopting an accessory, accessory dwelling unit ordinance that would be in compliance with the new law. And add options to make it fit to our city.
Thank you. I'm going to go to, to planning commissioner comments. Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing I have to say, and I'm not going to continue to beat a dead horse here, but just simply, we're supposed to be partners here. And when we ask for information, it's not to make your life more difficult, it's to hopefully help us make a decision that will make your lives easier going down the road. So I, I hope that going forward, it won't be such an extraction to get information to be provided to us. Again, it was very easily provided to us before. I'm not clear as to why. Again, I'm not going to continue to go over the issue over and over. I'm just hoping though, that as we go forward, it won't be so difficult. I'm hoping that our requests won't be met with such resistance and such a need to flush it out in such a bureaucratic manner and that we can have a very back and forth relationship. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner, can I draw your studio?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Aldrich?
I have no comment.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
One, one comment I just was curious on, and that is that I went to the ribbon cutting ceremony for Potters Lane over in Midway City about three weeks ago. And my understanding is the American Families Association had, the next project is in San Ana. Do you have any insight on that at this point in time?
That was one of three projects that was considered for, for veterans vouchers, for subsidies, and it was not selected for investment. It was a smaller project than the other two. The other two will be coming before you. One is fully funded and it will be on, I forget what street it's on, I think it's on Seventeenth near Harbor. It's just directly east of Harbor and it will be sixty-seven units and the other seventy units. So there's two projects. But that, they did apply for vouchers, but they were not funded through the, our agency, predominantly because it was a smaller project.
Commissioner Oren?
I just wanted to say that I was excited to attend the general planning advisory group meeting. I think the community members are excited about participating in the process. Great meeting, great group of people. So that was one. And the other one, I wanted to thank Ms. Bernau for providing us the documents that will be distributed at the Plating Academy. So thank you so much for providing that to us. I understand we weren't able to go because it was sold out, but just seeing those documents were very helpful, so, thank you.
Commissioner Oren?
I have no comment.
Thank you. I have none for tonight. So you will adjourn?
Thank you.